Ready?
Go. It's time to wake up. 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 Woo! At the break of dawn and it's on again, better get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the food. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. When the view been going through any negative phase, boy, here's your opportunity for turning the page. Today's a new chapter, right to fly and make it end with the wind, give it all you got. First, you gotta rise like a lurk in the light, pick the dirt from your eyes and work for the prize. It's done, 'cause we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, double hit snooze, it's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock, let's go. Tick tock, tick tock, woo! You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away, but come on, let's get it going, don't make delays. So bring me along and lift your arm high, like Georgia, we'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the stack, you'll get in it in a sec. If you win it like you never did it when you overslept, so right this minute, get right with it. What time it is? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four. Our invocation this morning will be brought by Reverend Lavoris Williams, pastor of Bethel AME Rising Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Crystal Smithman. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Okay, thank you. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear gracious, most holy God, we come thanking you for another opportunity to get it right, Lord Jesus. Father God, as I stand here before your people, Lord Jesus, let us clear our hearts just to please you, Lord Jesus. And if there's anything in our hearts that is not of you, Lord Jesus, we pray that you move as far as the east is from the west, as well as the north is from the south, Lord Jesus. So the prayer that I bring forth, Father God, would be pleasing to you, Lord Jesus, and be acceptable in your sight, Father God. Now, Lord, we pray for each council member here, Lord Jesus. In the district, Father God, right now, Father God, we pray for your covering, Father God, for our city, Lord Jesus. Father God, we pray that you give us the strategies, Father God, that are needed, Father God, to make changes that are needed for the city, Lord Jesus. Father God, we pray for your children, Father God, in the city. We pray, Father God, that there be a change in man's heart, Father God, a change in man's mind, Father God, that we will have a more loving spirit, Father God. Father God, we pray for each person that's here today, Lord Jesus, with the programs they have in mind, Father God, that bring forth, that there be a change, Father God, that their intentions and motives be pure, Father God, and it's for the people, Father God. Father God, you know every need of this city, Father God. You know how to change things around, Lord Jesus. And we pray right now that you do a change within our city, Father God. We pray for the mayor, Lord Jesus. We pray for his family, Father God, and every family that, Father God, that's representative here, Lord Jesus. We pray, Father God, right now, for your Holy Spirit to rain down, Father God, on our city, Father God. We need you, Lord Jesus. This world needs you, the community needs you, Father God. But more importantly, Father God, we need your directions, Father God. We pray that each district, each council member, connect with members of their city, Father God, that they that they rely on them to help change, make some changes within the city. Father God, we pray for the police precinct, Father God, and their covering over them, Father God, that they will be a representation for the neighborhood and the community, Father God. And we pray that they will be safe, Father God, out as they go out, Father God, before your people, Father God. We pray, Holy Spirit, right now, for your divine presence, Father God. Father God, keep me covered, Father God, as I stand here, Father God, as I represent you, as a change agent, Father God. Break strongholds, Father God, that need be broken. Break chains that need be broken, Father God. And let a new thing be done in this earth. Let a new thing be done in your city, Father God. And everyone will say, Lord, what must we do to be saved, Father God? Father God, have your way right now. It's gonna take your presence to change the city. Let us not, Father God, be so stubborn that we don't rely on what you might be saying right now in the spirit, Father God. We need you. The children need you. The adults need you. We need mentors for the adults, Father God. We need programs for change, Lord Jesus. Holy Spirit, we ask you right now to reside over the council right now, Father God, that we do the right thing for your people, Father God. We'll forever to give you all the praises, all the glory and honor, Father God, because we know that we have yielded only to you to make this change. This is your servant's prayer, in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen? Amen?
Amen.
Good morning, Madam Clerk. Could we please have the roll call?
Good morning. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Good morning. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, present.
Good morning. And Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning. Council, at this time, the minutes for the July second, twenty twenty-four through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, meetings are not ready. Chief Sparks, do we have any communications from the mayor's office this morning?
Morning, Mr. President. Madam Protem, to the members of the council, members of the public, there's no mayor's report this morning.
Okay, thank you. Without objection, we'll proceed to a presentation from Councilor Moore. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Brothers of Omega Psi Phi fraternity will come up. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Wanted to just bring awareness about an event that's taking place in this month of August, on the seventeenth, at Legion Field, a health fair that is being sponsored and led by the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi fraternity. Wanted to, you know, give them the opportunity to talk about this event, just to be able to have, you know, more touch points with the people of this city and have more participation. We know that, you know, health is something that is very important and wanted to make sure that we support these gentlemen in their efforts to increase the education and information that people have. And so if Mr. Kerr would come forward and just give us more information about the event.
Good morning. To the mayor's office, the president of the council, pro tem of the council, and council members. We're the members of the Alpha Phi chapter of Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated. And as some of you may be aware, this year in twenty twenty-four, this is our centennial year, which means that we've been serving the community of Birmingham for one hundred years. And as part of our continued service, we want to make you aware of an event that we are holding on August the seventeenth, twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, at Legion Field, from the hours of eleven a.m. to three p.m. We're holding a free, open-to-the-public, community health fair and blood drive. This event is free, and our ask of you is that you share this information with the citizens that you serve in your various communities, as well as the city's multiple platforms on social media. We just want you to help us get the word out about this free community health fair. Where we'll be having, we are partnering with twenty partners, healthcare partners and vendors, to serve at doing various health screenings and passing out information about the various diseases that affect our community. We just ask you to help us get the word out. That is our ask, that you pass out the flyers and promote it on your social media platforms, as well as through whatever venues you communicate with the citizens that you serve. Now, at this time, I will take any questions that you may have, and if not any questions, then we thank you for this time. Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Abbott?
I just wanted to ask, you said pass out flyers. Do you have some flyers for us to pass out?
Yes, ma'am, I gave them to Mr. Moore. And I will bring them, I gave him some, but I haven't bring them all to him so he can pass them out to you guys. But he has a copy of the flyer.
I have a neighborhood meeting tonight, and if I had some flyers, I would pass them out.
You'll have some, I'll get you some, before I leave.
Thank you.
Well, he was telling me to make sure I let you all know that we have electronic copies that we'll ask Councilman Moore to pass out to you guys, so that you're aware. But I will bring you some personally. It'll be at the desk. Any other questions? All right, we thank you for this time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just want to recognize Counselor Wright from Huey Town. Thank you for being there. All right. Moving on. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements of boards and agencies?
Yes, sir, we do. We have vacancies in the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. Alice Bowser, her term expires September first, September first, twenty twenty-four. This is a three-year term. All of these are three-year terms, and all of these terms will expire September first. So it'll be Anthony C. Hood, Arian Simone, Mashonda Taylor, Nick Willis, Tamira Coin Beasley, M.D., and William H. Burgess III. And I believe this falls under the Arts and Cultural Committee.
Okay.
And that is the only expirations we have for September.
Councilmore?
I did have a question. I know that, you know, at one point in time, the Birmingham Public Library fell under, you know, the Education Committee. And we recently had a change on that board with Jermaine Funnymain Johnson turning his resignation because of a position that he received, which is a good thing. But wanted to know if that also would fall under Arts and Culture as well?
No, I believe the Birmingham Public Library remains under the Community Development Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. This time, we'll read our statement on the conduct. Another question, Council Woods.
I'll get what you have for me.
Okay. I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, could we read through our consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page three with item five, six, and seven. Page four, items eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Page five, items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And page six, item seventeen. And that completes the consent agenda, and you should have a copy of the addendum on the dais.
Okay. Yes, we have that. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. President?
Protem Alexander?
Yes, I'd like to know if the council would consider adding item eighteen to consent.
All right, item eighteen, that's our addendum item. If there are no objections, we'll add that to the consent agenda. Any other items? If not, we have two items that are public hearing, they are not on the consent agenda, so Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move for consent.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, the consent agenda passes. Item one, please.
Item one on page two is an ordinance amending the City of Birmingham zoning ordinance, Title One, General Provisions, Ordinance Number fifteen dash one thirty-three as amended, filed by the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. And this is the hearing of all interested parties. It's case number ZAC twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 fourteen.
All right, it's been motioned in a second. And this is a planning and zoning item, so I'll turn it over at this time for, to Councilwoman Abbott to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that our presenters have arrived. So if y'all would come forward and present the case, please.
Good morning. My name is Kim Spurrel. I serve as the City Zoning Administrator in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits.
Good morning. My name is Jess Mays, and I serve as a senior planner in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits.
The item before you today is ZAC twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. This is an ordinance to amend our current zoning ordinance. The changes would impact Title One of the city zoning ordinance. The amendments will include the addition of a new zoning district called Urban Neighborhood, updated and new definitions, the addition of building standard requirements for all structures within our designated character districts, revisions to our area and dimensional requirements for our zoning districts, amended uses and new additions to our permitted uses table, and also amended land use development standards, including uses that are permitted with conditions, permitted by special exception, and permitted as accessory. Just to recap our community engagement regarding these changes, staff held four stakeholder engagement meetings in November of twenty twenty-three to receive feedback from our stakeholders. We also attended the Citizens Advisory Board on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to present the amendments. We did not ask for or receive a vote at that meeting, but we did present the changes to them. We also presented the proposed text changes to the Birmingham Planning Commission in January and February of twenty twenty-four. On March sixth of twenty twenty-four, the Birmingham Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of these changes to the city council. On May seventh, twenty twenty-four, the Zoning Advisory Committee also voted to recommend approval of these text changes to the city council. On June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, we presented these proposed changes to the Committee of the Whole, and they voted to support the text changes. And then at its regularly scheduled meeting on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Committee also voted to recommend approval of the text changes to the city council. And we're happy to answer any questions if you have related to these amendments. And that concludes our staff report.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Do any members of the public wish to ask questions or make comments about these ordinance changes? Seeing no one. But council members, would council members have any questions? Counselor Clark?
Yes. Thank you. I think this is very exciting. It's a big change. So this creates a new zoning classification that can be applied, I guess, in land use planning or in zoning initiatives that we might pursue, where we will go and change the zoning on land. I mean, would we do it in the context of a framework plan? Or might we just go do it just because we want to do it? I mean, how will it be applied? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so the new district, Urban Neighborhood, we will use it in the areas that have not gone through their framework plan rezoning yet. So there are meetings that are being set up now, beginning as soon as later on this month, for those parts of town that have not had their rezoning. But that district, if approved by the council, will be available if anyone wishes to rezone property. And then our plan is to go back to those parts of town that have already had their framework plan rezoning and update the maps in areas where we think Urban Neighborhood would apply. It would still go through the public hearing process, like any other rezoning.
Okay. Because I know sometimes, you know, we update the land use plan to inform future zoning decisions, but we might actually go and apply this in places where we think it should.
Yes, ma'am. Our goal is to use this immediately. We've already had some developers contact us about rezoning to this particular district. And we also, like I said, will start with the framework plan rezonings that are still out there. And then we'll go back to the other areas of town and add it to those areas as well.
Okay, will we develop design guidelines to go with this?
They're included. The design guidelines for the character districts also are for the Urban Neighborhood district.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is about the minimum lot size for single-family. So I guess I'm just trying to understand it. I mean, I could see it on an urban edge with a heavy street, the fifty, I guess it's fifty by fifty, as opposed to like, well, that's the maximum proposed in here, whereas currently our minimum is fifty by one twenty. So our maximum would be like fifty by fifty.
So Urban Neighborhood gives you a lot size maximum versus the minimum because we are trying to utilize it in those areas that are adjacent to mixed use and our transit corridors. So it's encouraged to promote more density in housing choice. So that's why we didn't want to have a minimum requirement. We want to encourage developers to right-size those lots.
So in those types of contexts, it's hard for me to imagine a single-family house in like next to mixed use. So is that like gonna be a tall and skinny because the lot is so small? Or?
It would be up to the developers. We've seen there, we've seen some proposals where it might be a long and skinny, or it could be a regular-sized house that might be a duplex and have two units inside it to give more density. And that's what we're trying to go after, is the density in these areas.
Okay, so you don't see this ever being applied interior to a neighborhood that we like we have today?
I don't think the creation of the district is not intended for our established single-family residential neighborhoods. The Urban Neighborhood is intended to be kind of on the border of maybe our single-family duplex townhouses and mixed-use commercial. It's to help fill that gap in that transitional housing, where you go from your established single-family to a neighborhood that will allow for more housing choice.
Okay. I hear you, and I'm good with that. But I'm just wondering, will we pursue anything that would support densifying interior to a neighborhood? Now, I don't want to be too dense, but, you know, being able to do duplex and ADUs interior to our existing neighborhoods on those fifty by one twenty lots, I think they could accommodate a lot more than they currently, than is currently allowed, I guess, in the.
Yes, ma'am. So that is actually, our next project is to look at that, to look at ADUs and other alternatives as a planning team. So we hope to be back before you guys in the next few months, next year, to discuss what that might look like in our existing neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, so this is exciting, you know, in that it really is different than what our traditional zoning has been and opens up new opportunities. You know, and being on the Planning and Zoning Committee, one of the things that we discussed quite a bit was the potential for having a business inside of a residence, or a residence inside of a business, however you want to say that, specifically business on the ground floor up to a certain square footage with the residence above. And, you know, there's certain, only certain categories of businesses that would be allowed. And so that was a point of quite a bit of discussion and committee. But I think we kind of landed on a, in a with a good compromise in terms of zone, or permitting by special exception. And so therefore, anyone who wants to open up a neighborhood grocery or a barber shop or something along those lines within the allowed uses would have to appear before the Neighborhood Association to get a recommendation. So I know that from, you know, a business owner's standpoint, that adds another step in their process. But I think in terms of allowing residents to have some input into what may be potentially, you know, locating next door, I think that's a good compromise. So just wanted to highlight that. Also, very excited that we're, you know, that this allows accessory dwelling units and look forward to additional conversations in the future about allowing those elsewhere in other zone districts. But, you know, also want to just highlight that, you know, we're, what this is trying to accomplish is increasing density, as what you stated, but also another important component of this is improving walkability. So a lot of traditional neighborhoods, types of places that, you know, folks generally like to stay when they travel are sort of the examples that staff has had in mind in presenting this zoning designation. So the idea of having a little neighborhood, small cafe that you can walk to is, you know, one of the. one of the features of this zoning designation and something that's, over the, you know, past couple of decades at least, has not been possible under the current zoning regime. So that's exciting to see. Just wanted to offer those comments. Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? This was a lot to absorb. I've read over it about probably ten times, and I found new things last night. For instance, the accessory dwelling unit, there's no definition. And it seems that, you know, in the definitions, we would have the definition. There's some things similar to it, but ADUs have now become an acronym that we can all say and confuse our friends who don't know what they are, especially when we're talking about putting them in a single-family district, which makes it not single-family anymore. So there's a lot of, you know, so ADUs, I think in the, you know, we have so many different definitions, sections in our zoning ordinance, but I just thought ADU needed to be in here. And I couldn't find it.
It's number seventy-five accessory dwelling on page ten.
Are you talking about?
Accessory dwelling.
Okay, but that, well, it's, it's one of the tens near the beginning. Okay, but that just says dwelling accessory. I think we need to define ADU because that has become a thing. You know, it's people talk about ADU. So we need to put accessory dwelling unit in our ordinance if we're going to refer to it. See what I mean? I mean, just saying dwelling, comma, accessory doesn't say what an ADU is.
Yeah, this is the definition we've been using for a number of years.
But maybe we could add.
We will be making.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, ma'am. Well, so if we add a word to this, we'll have to re-advertise and hold another public hearing. So if, if it would be all right with the council, when we have our cleanup revisions that will come in the next few months, we could add the word unit to this definition at that time.
Okay. Okay, so, no, I wouldn't want us to have to publish it again. But there was another issue besides the fact that we don't define ADU. And that is that under the dwelling accessory on page twenty-three, let's see, on page, they took out the requirement for parking to go with your accessory dwell. It's, it's a different twenty-three from the first twenty-three you come to. I guess we have two different documents here, and that makes it confusing. But the parking requirement was lined through, and that doesn't seem very intelligent when most people who come to live somewhere bring their car with them. And where are they going to put it? So.
That was taken out to align with the new parking regulations that were adopted in May, that a driveway or parking space is no longer mandatory. You cannot overpark. But we are, do not have a minimum parking requirement any longer based off those revisions in May.
Well, I believe that was a mistake. But maybe it can be fixed in the future. Then caretaker. Caretaker, a proper, a location for a caretaker, and I'm sorry, I didn't write, oh, I think it's on the site, it's on page twenty-three, it's item C. It's defined as a security guard. Well, a caretaker could be someone who maintains the property. And so to me, only, only allowing it to be a security guard does not seem to be sufficient because a caretaker and a security guard don't seem to go together. Yeah, it could be the person who maintains the landscape, fixes the plumbing when it breaks at two A.M., you know, so it could be a maintenance person. And I realize you've already said we can't make any changes without republishing the thing, but this is something that needs to be fixed because very few people are going to have a security guard of their very own that's going to spend the night, but they might need somebody to fix the pipes when they explode at two A.M. Or mow the grass or cut the bushes or whatever else. So it just needs to be expanded, a caretaker, to provide more services than being a security guard. Just a thought. And then you have a misspelled word on page twenty-five. Yeah, I had to do it, yeah. It says form and it should be from, but that's an easy one, and I guess you don't have to republish for typos. Good. That, that was all that I, I popped up with last night, were just the need for more definitions, but we can catch them next time. Yes, Councilor Williams?
Sorry, I'm coming in from an uneducated zoning stance on this and was not in the committee meeting, but how are we not going to have issues with unintended consequences of businesses that we don't want in a residential street?
Well, we only have allowed, what was it, five businesses, and they all are special exceptions, so they have to come to ZBAs.
And they're only allowed in urban neighborhood. So that's if the area was rezoned to urban neighborhood. And then those few commercial uses would have to go through the application process with the zoning board of adjustment, which means it would go to the Neighborhood Association for review first, and then it would be heard by our zoning board of adjustment for approval or denial.
Well, I, my concern is, and I think we're going to hear some of this in the next zoning item that, that we have on the agenda, is I have several neighborhoods in my district where we have a couple of people that show up and, and might vote the quite opposite way than the, than the almost every other resident in the neighborhood feels. So it's, you know, it's kind of hard when you have, you know, three, four people giving approval or denial of something when you have the en masse of the neighborhood wanting something that's opposite of, of that. Was my only concern with hearing that it went to the neighborhood because, you know, some of these neighborhood organizations are, are, you know, attendance is bad and, and once you attend some of them, you understand why attendance is so bad, they run so pitifully. But anyway, that's a concern of mine, but I guess that it has to go to the neighborhood then the zoning board of adjustments. Okay.
Yes, sir. And then adjacent property owners also receive a notice, so they are invited to attend the public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, and one thing about the urban neighborhood, it's really designed for it to be near the nodes of our new transit system as it expands all over the place. I don't think we're considering putting that in the middle of people's districts. It's really designed for the transit system to have some, near the stops, we will actually have some density and have some businesses and some people living there and all that. It's, it's not designed to be plunked just anywhere. So to me, that makes a difference because it's a new kind of neighborhood, but we're not going to be, you know, putting it places where people will object to it, hopefully. And one other question, which came to my, my, my notice last night, we're allowing event centers in mixed-use medium? And I was wondering why. Event centers have turned out to be things that can cause issues for residents who like to sleep at night. And so event centers being allowed in mixed-use medium just didn't seem like a really good idea to me.
They're currently permitted, though we changed it to a special exception so that they would only be allowed after review by the Neighborhood Association in the zoning board of adjustments.
It still scares me because people might not realize what they're getting until they've already got it. You know, it might sound good, you know, they always say weddings and baby showers and birthday parties, and then instead what you get are these wild parties with eight hundred cars and lots of noise. So, you know, that's the reason that I, you know, I realize you're saying that there'll be some checks and balances, but event centers just haven't turned out to be as wonderful as they originally sounded like they would be. They sound kind of peaceful and nice, but they aren't. So I guess this is something else for us to add when we come back and make changes.
Question? Just, just to be clear, the event centers are not allowed in the urban neighborhood district according to the table?
That's correct.
Yeah, this was mixed-use medium.
Okay.
And I'm sure y'all all noticed the vast number of pages, you know, in this thing. So there's lots of, there's lots of things to notice every time that you read it, you notice something different. But anyway, any other questions or comments? Okay, so y'all are ready to vote? Okay. Mr. President, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
All in, excuse me, all in favor, let it be known by.
Oh.
We, we have a resident that would like to offer a comment.
Okay, well, please come forward. I thought I had called for a residence, but maybe I didn't.
Good morning, and I apologize if I missed your calling. My name is Ms. Kirk, one oh one Jewel Circle, Birmingham, Alabama. And I agree with you.
Can you, can you talk into the microphone a little more closely so we can understand you?
Sure. I did not come intending to speak, but as I listened to the questions, I have more questions about this ordinance. Like you, Council Abbott, I read this document, I had more questions than I did understanding. The main area that I had a concern about was accessory structures. When you read throughout this document, accessory structures require special exception. In the Oxford Neighborhood Association, we had someone come to us for a special exception. And that is an area of approval that is kind of muddy, the way it's raining. So if I read correctly in this document, a childcare, no, a family care center, night center could be designated as an accessory structure, meaning it could come into a residential area and get approved as a special exception. And hopefully, maybe I misunderstood it, but the accessory structure, special exceptions throughout this document should cause some people who live in residential areas a little bit of concern. Thank you.
Okay, well, they, they are allowed in residential areas, and maybe our staff members could come up and explain how it works so you'll feel more comfortable.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Those uses are not changing. They're already in the same districts that they're currently allowed. And they do have to go through the procedure for zoning certificate of operation. In the special exception section and in the permitted with conditions, it outlines, there's about fifteen different items that have to be submitted and reviewed as part of that process, and we're not changing any of those steps. We're leaving them as, as is right now.
And, and those are all, you can't open a daycare center in a house and just run it. You have to live there and you have a limited number of children.
That's correct.
That you can keep, so.
And you still have to submit your application to be reviewed by our zoning staff.
Okay. So did that clear anything up or did it make it worse?
It cleared it a little bit. But then my last part of the question I left off was where does homeowner associations fall into this also? In some of the pieces I saw where a traffic study may be required, but nowhere is there a notice about homeowners associations that actually conflict with the ordinance. Thank you.
If you have an HOA with, with stricter requirements, the HOA would, would prevail unless it was doing something illegal. You know, I mean, most people enter into a legal, a legal agreement when they're a member of an HOA, so I would think the HOA would, would be in addition to what the city requires. In addition. So there we are. So if your HOA didn't allow childcare centers, you wouldn't have one. So that, does that help?
Councilor Abbott? So just for clarification on the accessory dwelling unit question, so currently they're permitted in D four, D five, multi-use, low, medium, high, downtown, and, and some others. So they're not allowed in, currently in D one, two, and three, which are, are more traditional types of neighborhoods. And so in the context of this conversation with respect to accessory dwelling units, as presented before us, they're, that would be allowed in this new urban neighborhood district, which currently, there are no areas of Birmingham that are, that have this zoning designation because at this moment it doesn't exist in our zoning code. Just wanted to offer that clarification.
Well, there's some grandfathers.
Right, absolutely.
There's some grandfathering out there because people used to have people living on their property in the back usually and.
Right.
Separate units, but that's grandfathered. But currently in our normal single-family districts, it's actually what it says, it's single-family, just like one family. And then if you have an HOA, that's icing on the cake. Now, are we ready?
Yes, I believe we're ready. Madam Clerk?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is item number two, also on page two. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty-two zero 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 two, to change zone district boundaries from D two, single-family district, to QC two, qualified general commercial district, filed by Carl Christian, the owner, for the property located at three three one Roberson Drive and situated in section thirty-six, one quarter, section three, township sixteen, range two west, and this is the hearing of our interested parties, and so we need a motion on the item.
Move the item. All right, this is a zoning item as well, so, Councilor Abbott?
Yes, if Ms. Spurrell would read our case, please.
Yes, ma'am. Once again, my name is Kim Spurrell. I serve as the City Zoning Administrator in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. The case before you now is ZAC twenty-two dash two. This is an application to change the zoning from D two, single-family residential, to QC two, qualified general commercial. The property is located in the Roebuck neighborhood located at three three one Roberson Drive. The applicant is proposing to use an existing church as a funeral home to conduct funeral services. That would include cremations, however, all crematory services would be contracted out and not performed on-site at the church. They will hold services in the existing chapel, and they plan on having five employees initially with the potential for additional future staff. The subject property sits on almost an acre of land, currently zoned D two, single-family, adjacent. Adjacent parcels to the north, southeast, and west are also zoned D two, single-family. The city's long-range land use plan identifies this property as residential low, which is a dwelling district designed to allow for single-family residential development. It may be applied to preserve the character of developed residential areas that are predominantly single-family in nature. Based on the site plan review, the proposed parking exceeds the maximum allowed by eight spaces. So, the applicant can apply for a parking variance through our zoning board of adjustment or propose low-impact development techniques on the site that would be approved by the city's stormwater division. The property will also have to comply with the city's landscape ordinance. The applicant can count existing landscaping towards their total required, but they must supplement what they have to make up the difference. A landscaping plan with plant species, size, placement, and quantity should be provided and approved by the city landscape architect if the rezoning is approved. The stormwater division prefers to see low-impact development techniques incorporated around the property to offset the parking overage. They would like to see ideas such as a rain garden, rain barrels, permeable pavers, or a bio swell if space permits. The Birmingham Department of Transportation did not have any comments for this rezoning case. The property is located in the Northeast Area Framework Plan. This plan was adopted in twenty seventeen. The applicant met with the Roebuck Neighborhood Association on June tenth, twenty twenty-four, and the neighborhood voted nine to three to support their request. The zoning advisory committee met on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and they voted to recommend the rezoning request to the city council with Q conditions. And the planning and zoning committee met on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and they voted to send this item to the council with no recommendation. So, if approved by the city council, the following Q conditions are recommended by the ZAC. To, number one, the following uses shall be allowed: a funeral home, family day night care home, accessory childcare center, columbarium, mausoleum, Parker Greenway, place of worship, elementary, middle, or high school, bed and breakfast inn, historic, farmer's market, mobile grocery store, community garden, market stand, or building mounted solar panels. Number two, if approved, the applicant must provide a landscaping plan that meets all requirements of the city's zoning ordinance in Title One, Chapter Six. And if approved, the applicant must resurvey the property through the subdivision committee to combine the three lots into one. And number four, the applicant must incorporate LID or low-impact development techniques to offset the over-parking. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Spurrell. Is the applicant here?
I'd like to say good morning. My name is Carl Christian. I'm the owner of the property at three thirty-one Robison Drive. Based on what has just been recently read, the planning and subdivision committee of Mr. Roberts Low has approved that rezoning already. I don't know if he's given that, any of that to you.
It has to be recorded.
Okay, so it hasn't been recorded, but I am a realtor, been a licensed realtor practitioner for thirty-three years. I'm a real estate instructor as well. So, what I'm bringing to this particular area is value. I purchased the property back in twenty twenty-one for two hundred thirty thousand dollars, which is public record. And now, within appraised value, as an as-is value, two years ago, it appraises now for well over six hundred twenty thousand dollars. So, I am bringing worth to the area. I currently lease the property out to Pastor Derek Lee, Darrell Lee, who pastors Grace Point Church. I leased the building out to him, because it's in idle there, because I'm not making any money at the time. And he currently is doing a great job. They're looking to do outreach program to bring in those who wander in the street, because the building, before I purchased it, used to be an AAU, not AAU, but an Alcoholics Anonymous Center for Drug Treatment, things of that nature. So, with me purchasing a property, I think the value that I'm bringing is a resource to the neighbors that are in that area. We all know that we all going to expire one day on this earth. We all going to die. The Bible declares, me being a Christian, says in Hebrew nineteen twenty-seven, "It's appointed to command once to die, after which is to judgment." So, one day, we're going to have to, whether we want to leave here or not, we can't cancel that particular appointment. So, I'm bringing because of my compassion for families in the area who want services that be rendered to them with compassion, dignity, and of course, convenience. And not only that, pricing. When you lose a loved one, sometimes most people don't have the idea of having what to do with the property's possessions that are left. Me as a realtor, I've been involved, engaged in a lot of situations where families, when they do die, they don't have a will in place. So, in most cases, I have to go to help facilitate and sell those properties, which get probate, sent to the probate court. So, I'm bringing that to the table as well, as part of my services. And not only that, I'm employing others, and I just want to have an impact. The Neighborhood Association, overwhelmingly as you just read, voted to approve it. I'm asking you all this morning for your blessings, that I can get up and operating to be an asset to the community, not a hindrance. I can assure you, my clientele would not bother anybody.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak regarding this rezoning request? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Wanda Bramble. And I hope we're talking about the same property. Now, I live in Roebuck, and I live on Roebuck Drive. And when I heard about this venture, my understanding was it was to be built for townhouses or apartments for veterans and seniors. Now, I live on the side of the community that the homeowners are really struggling to try to bring Roebuck back to its luster in, on that area. We do have a lot of renters over there, but there are homeowners that are moving in that section. Now, I must be confused, but the property, as I understood it to be, is right at Roebuck. And right at, on one end is Robison, and on the other end is Five Mile Road. So, the property is behind a home. Now, Roebuck is already at a place where we want to build it up. And so, I'm not understanding what he's bringing forth. Maybe I'm confused, and I, maybe I'm confused about where this property is. But the way it was explained to me, this property sits behind a residential home. And so, I need to understand where this property is exactly, because what he just described is not what was brought when I was in the meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Spurrell, do you have a map that you can show her? Because it is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It's a church right now. And Robinson is on one side.
Robison, Robison.
So, I live on Roebuck. If you're coming from the parkway headed to Center Point, and you're turning left on Roebuck Drive.
Right, sure.
I live right on Roebuck Drive. Now, right when you get to the traffic light, on one end, you have Five Mile, and on the other side is Robison. There is a home, a residential home, and back behind the home, someone has already cleared the land. Now, I understood that that land was going to be built for veterans and seniors, apartments or townhouses. I came down here to oppose that, if that's what that's for, because we're already struggling, the, the homeowners, in trying to bring this area back. And I don't see, if that's what that is for, then no. I was not, and, and another thing I'm concerned about, if you're going to do something major like that, like he's mentioning, something needs to go out to the community. It is not appropriate for a handful of people to dictate what a community needs to have in its community. And I'm very appalled of how that was handled. Now, granted, I've only been in this community for two and a half years, and I don't need to be at every meeting to be made aware of what's going to impact my investment. And my property is an investment. And mind you, it was a hot mess when I moved in it. But I've been working with it, and it's coming right along, just as other residents. I take pride in my property, and I'm not certain what's going on. And the information that I have been given, to me, has not been quite clear. And so, I don't appreciate having to run around to try to figure out who's doing what in my community when we have associations that should be clear about it. I have a concern. We don't want...
We're, we're happy to hear your concern. It sounds like he's, he's wanting to rezone his property for a funeral home, not for housing for anybody. So, maybe it's a different place, but Ms. Spurrell, can you show her, please? So, we don't want any confusion. Counsel...
I don't want to be confused.
Yeah. Counselor Woods, did you have a...
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to add some context. I think she's getting her square, but these are two different projects. She's thinking about a project at the corner of Roebuck and Robinson. But, thank you, God.
Okay, well, I, it does sound like it's a different location, but very close by. So, if, I mean, it's still Robinson.
It's close.
This is south. Okay. It's a different property.
Yeah.
Okay, so... And thank you guys for being patient with me. I will be back when I figure out, I don't know how to figure out who's building what behind this residential home. The point that I'm trying to make here is that, no, I don't want to see anyone building apartments, AKA townhouses, whatever you want to call it, in that area. We need single-family homes that are affordable, so people can buy into the community. When you rent, you're not buying in. Okay, you don't really care about the property. So, if someone's...
But it, but it turns out that the case that you're concerned about is not this case.
I appreciate that.
This, this is a funeral home, so what, what we need to do is talk about the case that's before us. And then, when the other case comes up, you can come back.
And how will I find that out? Because I was told that this was the meeting for that. And I need to be given clear information, and I apologize for taking up your time.
Oh, it's okay.
But it's important to me.
It's okay. We, we want to hear from our residents, and we know how confusing it is, because Neighborhood Associations are the formal place that requests are sent by the city. And if you're not there, you're not going to know what they're doing, because there's no communication. We used to have newsletters. We don't have newsletters anymore, so if you're not on an email list or something, you might not hear about it.
And I am on email. I think that's what concerns me, even with this portion. That, to me, affects a community overall. If anyone is aware of Roebuck, it's, in particular, the parkway. As far as I'm concerned, it has fallen from, from grace. I remember when Roebuck was the place to be. Okay, but right now, we have a lot of predatory lenders on Roebuck. We have a mass amount of, of fast food restaurant. We have one sit-down restaurant. And quite frankly, we don't even have any coffee shops. Come on now.
Okay, we, we, okay, we, we want to concentrate on the case we're on. And Counselor Moore has a comment he would like to make.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Abbott. So, I know that you're in the Roebuck neighborhood, and that is President Becky Wallace. I'll be sure to make sure that I get you in touch with her, because she does a really good job in making sure that folks know about the Neighborhood Association meetings and staying informed about what's going on, and so...
I've been in touch with Becky. I've been in touch with Becky, and we differ on what is good for Roebuck. I'm going to stop talking, but what I'm saying is this. I've lived with apartments. I don't know when this is going to come up, but I, all I know is that they've cleared this land behind this house right before you get to Five Mile. And I was under the impression that's what was going to be built. That's the only reason why I'm down here, because I wanted to oppose that. We don't need to have any more Druid Hills, where you're building apartments, and then the community is a mess.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the community who would like to speak? If you want to speak, please come up to the microphone and have your piece.
Good morning. I'm Renee Hite. I'm here to represent the neighborhood where the funeral homes will be put. They live across the street, and they got houses down that street. They don't want no funeral home. We've got three funeral homes within six miles apiece. And this could bring violence. People go to funerals, they get upset, and they start shooting. You've got houses three hundred feet probably from this church. We don't need that, and they don't want it. So, I'm here to oppose it for the whole neighborhood.
Okay, and you live where?
Uh, my, I'm here for my neighbor friends.
So, what's your address?
Uh, Sherri Jones. She lives at three twenty-one Camp Circle. No, I don't, I don't live there, no. I live off of Five Mile Road. I live at three oh four Eastview Drive.
Okay, who lives at three twenty-one Camp Circle?
Uh, Sherri Jones.
And you're representing Sir Sherri Jones? Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Woods, did you have a comment?
Uh, no, my staff is just getting with the previous speaker.
Oh, okay. Anyone, anyone else? Are there any other members of the audience? Any members of the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Abbott. So, I've seen, you know, this property. I know exactly where it's located. It's actually located right behind the East Precinct Police Department, back on, uh, Back Road, you know, where, you know, people have to actually pass by the East Precinct Police Department to, to get to it. However, it is right across the street from, you know, residential spaces. I have talked to several residents who live right across the street from this property, and they have shared with me that this is something that they do not feel comfortable with being in their neighborhood, given the fact that there are several other funeral homes that are active in the area. And so, you know, one of the things that, you know, we always want to make sure that we do is taking into consideration the, the quality of life that people will have, you know, when different things like this are being suggested. I know that, you know, Counselor Abbott is a big advocate for, you know, making sure we advocate for the people, because they are the folks that we represent. And, you know, if this is something that will bring some unjust activity or, you know, a lot of, you know, commotion to the area, that's something that should be taken into consideration. And so, just curious as to how you're going to, you know, be able to manage the amount of traffic that is going to be coming through there, and, you know, just the, the influx of activity that's going to take place in that area.
Right, thank you, Counselor Moore. Number one, let me express to you all, in that area behind my building, there are only three houses. Two are owner-occupied, and one is, is a landlord-owned property. So, behind that property, that's just three residents. My neighbors, who actually boarded me, are commercial properties, the Birmingham Police Department. I just recently sold a property to an investor, a model strip next to the police department. Then, of course, you've got the police department's parking lot, which they pretty much offered to us to use if we have an overflow, as well as Pastor Eric Harris, who has a church right across the street from my property. So, his parking is, there's more than adequate parking, as was mentioned earlier. Then, of course, you've got Walmart, which is a drawing car for everybody. So, I'm less than, gosh, maybe two or three blocks from those commercial tenants or neighbors that I have. That is a house that's vacant next to me that, that's been a kind of a nuisance, but we just recently was able to make contact with that particular owner to get him to cut that yard. So, in essence, we'll have patrol... So in essence, we'll have patrol, have security on hand for parking. But funerals, most cases, I don't know what funeral you're talking about, where they real rockets shoot up and everything. Most funerals, as I've known over the years, have been peaceful, unless there's something that I'm missing here. So I think having patrol on duty if there's an overflow to make mention they don't impede upon the resident's property, I think we can do that. We can curtail that. It's not like a nightclub. We don't have to have security for, you know, like the nightclub where you have people, you're vetting them to make sure they have the right frame of mind before they go in. These are people who've lost loved ones, you all. When they've lost their loved ones, you try to be sanctimonious and as most calm as you possibly can be. There may be some emotions, outbursts of crying. That's the only thing I know of an outburst. But in this particular incident, as I've mentioned, I'm bringing value. Right now, that mention to you, and as is appraisal of $620,000, with improvements that I've made to the facility, the appraisers share with me that my value now can bring $850,000. So I'm bringing value not just to my property, but to the surrounding neighbors. Now granted, this is a seller's market. So pretty much those of you who have, are homeowners, you can pretty much command anything you want price-wise on your property. So that's what I've done. I brought value to the area.
Okay, we appreciate that. Are there any other council members who have questions or comments, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This says no recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Committee. So, you know, sometimes we don't always-
Yeah, we actually met.
Okay.
We actually met and there was disagreement amongst the committee members as to which direction we should go.
Okay, so there's-
There's this, in my opinion, this is a spot zoning. It's surrounded on four sides by single-family residences. And the long-range land use plan identifies it as residential low. So commercial encroachment into a residential neighborhood for no apparent reason except that you bought the property, to me, is inappropriate. And so, and so I would not vote for this because I wouldn't want someone encroaching into my neighborhood with a commercial use. I mean, it's a church now, but a funeral home is a business. And if we put a business here, then soon the residences will go away because people don't wanna live near a commercial entity, usually. Some people do, but not many. So that was my reason for not voting to send this with a recommendation because I cannot vote for a spot zone. Spot zoning is something I don't vote for.
You and Mr. Hoyt.
Yes.
Maybe you had a check, my quick-
Well-
Please don't interrupt, Sir. Sir Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I tend to agree with you that, yeah, I'm very familiar with what this is. I was concerned that we said that we were gonna use the East Precinct as overflow parking because I've spent a great deal of time at the East Precinct and there doesn't seem to be a lot of available parking as it is, which makes me concerned that parking would be even more of an issue. So I agree, this does sound like spot zoning. And I know this, if I lived on a street, I would not want my city council to approve a funeral home or anything similar to that on the street that I live on. So, thank you.
Any other council members? Counselor Clark?
Thank you. I was just curious about, I think it's interesting that, you know, it's got more parking than our new ordinance allows. And curious about how you're going to right-size the park. What's your approach gonna be to pursue a variance or to alter the property to come into compliance with the parking maximum?
Well, I think it exceeded the minimum. But next, across the street is a church member, a church pastor, who's a friend of mine. It's another church, a Gopay Church, who sometimes he has an event going on. We allow each other to use each other's facilities. So he has more than enough adequate parking.
Well, I'm saying you have to get rid of eight spaces, is my understanding. You have to get rid of eight spaces on your property or you have to get a variance to say. So I'm wondering, what is your approach going to be? It sounds like you need even more parking than- You're sounding like your use is gonna call for more parking than you already have, which is already overparked for our-
Uh, not really, because let me share this with you. Most of the time when people have funerals, they don't necessarily have it at the chapel. They go to the deceased's church to facilitate that. So it's not an ongoing thing. It's a hit and miss in most funeral homes. So as to answer your question, I've really covered any particular overflow that we've ever had. Now, if I needed additional parking, I did mention the police department and I mentioned the church across the street, which is a pastor friend of mine, Pastor Eric Harris, who was offering that, his church to us. So-
So I guess you're not answering my question. I don't see funeral homes, you know. When I see funeral homes, they're fairly passive-use. They're not overly busy because families come in-
Yeah.
-to make arrangements.
Right.
So I'm not so concerned about when you do get to hold a funeral on your, at your funeral home, if it's approved, and you exceed the parking you have there, how are you gonna park those? That's not the question I'm asking. As it stands, you have more parking than the law, than the zoning code-
That's correct.
-allows. So you have to either get rid of eight spaces to come into compliance or you have to get approval of variance to be able to keep those eight extra spaces. So I'm just asking, what is your plan? How will you come into compliance? What's your plan? Because if you don't get the variance, if you pursue the variance and you don't get it-
Yeah.
Are you gonna tear out eight spaces and create, you know, a rock garden or meditation garden? I'm just asking. What is your plan?
Typically, most of the limousines that I have on the facility, there's a parking space in the back that we could use to earmark those just for parking, not just for the usage of that facility. Now, this question's never been posed to me. I didn't think I need to have a variance for do such because it's more than enough. So if you can get rid of enough, sure, we can- Hey, whatever needs to be done, we could do that to come into compliance.
Well, let me ask, may I ask him? Like, are you all gonna make him do something about the over-parking?
Yes, ma'am. Because it's a change in use, it will, the new business will have to comply with all of the regulations. So he will have to submit plans. And if he shows the excess parking, it will have to be addressed. As you mentioned, it could be through a variance. He could remove the spaces or he can include some low-impact design techniques in his landscaping that would mitigate the extra paving for the spaces.
Okay. And it sounds like he doesn't have a good understanding of that at this point.
Yeah, I couldn't speak to that, but we have been over that. In addition, we've also asked for a landscaping plan. That's something else that will have to be provided. We have not received a landscaping plan yet either.
Okay. And I agree with my colleagues in principle on spot zoning because I don't like it interior to a neighborhood. I do think that this is an existing structure with a field of parking around it. And as I experienced funeral homes in my neighborhood, they're fairly passive. They don't allow, they don't attract a lot of business on a day-to-day, like a lot of parking or a lot of traffic on a day-to-day basis. Now, when they do have funerals at the chapel, on, at the funeral home chapel, that's an exception. A lot of times it's during the day. You know, funerals tend to be at 11:00 or 12:00, maybe when people aren't at home, unless they're retired. But anyway, I think the way this is situated, I could probably make an exception on the spot zoning, even though I'm not a fan of spot zoning. It's connected to other commercial uses and it's existing. It's not like they're gonna build this. They're gonna basically adaptively reuse a church. I don't know. It doesn't give me as much pain as some spot zoning requests, so.
Okay, are you?
Counselor Abbott?
Okay. Got a question. Counselor Smithman?
Can I make a statement?
Listen.
Can I make a statement?
No, we wanna hear right now from, I wanna make sure all the council members have asked their questions and feel comfortable with whatever we're doing.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So is this, I wanna make sure I'm getting this correct. This is a funeral home, but you're also gonna have chapel services there?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. I have some concerns. I just attended a funeral on the north side at 12 o'clock on a Saturday, and it was right next to a neighborhood, basically in the neighborhood, but the church was on the corner. And it was packed. When I tell you, we were parking all in the neighborhoods, you know, vacant parking lots of restaurants. It was a mess. And other people in the neighborhood were probably like, what is going on? Traffic was bad. And so I'm really, I'm with Counsel Williams, I'm really concerned about that because if I live on the street of a funeral home and I saw hundreds of people there, I would be upset, very upset, very pissed at them. Who, what's, do you have a name for the funeral home?
Yes, Christian Chapel Funeral Home. We've done LLC work. I do have a real estate school there, as well as my office there at the lower level. So it's more than just a funeral home and church setting.
Okay, do you, I may have missed this. Do you have a business license?
I hadn't gotten a license because it was in a residential. But if I need to do whatever retroactive fees, oh, I don't mind paying those. The state license me, they're okay with it, even being at the church.
Okay. And then, it sounds like you haven't complied with all the, what the zoning advisory committee asked you to do. Because you don't have, is there a reason why you don't have a landscaping plan yet?
Well, we just got approved from the subdivision committee, which had to put three properties together, which was resuraveled through paying subdivision. So we've done that. But we will do whatever's necessary to come into compliance.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry you have to repeat yourself. What made you decide on doing, having a funeral home at this location?
Yeah, I used to work for one with this Faith Memorial Funeral Home right there on the Parkway, which I sold to that individual, Mr. Joe Barrow. He has several funeral homes in the area. And I worked for him and when I sold that building to him back in 2013, I was allowed to work with him. And it was just been a passion of mine to a degree. Before I got into real estate, I used to sell cemetery plots, the Faith Memorial Cemetery, which is maybe a half mile, about two or three miles from there. So that within itself just led me to be compassionate, to help people when their loved ones are deceased. I've been on the tally in the family situations where I was the one, there were two guys that helped put my loved ones into ground or burial. And so for me, I wanna help facilitate individuals to be proactive, do a preneed so they don't encounter what I did over the years prior to.
And, you know, I have a lot of funeral homes in my district, but they don't have chapel services, which means kind of what Counselor Clark was saying, you know, it's very rare that you see it overcrowded. But like I said with my last concern was chapel services. It looks like it's in the middle of the neighborhood. You know, there are a lot of chapel services. Church services, chapel services, yes, there's chapel services in here. Church, I'll say church services. A lot of church services happening right now. Okay, well, you answered all my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? I did wanna ask, have you done any renovations to the building to prepare it for becoming a funeral home?
Yes, ma'am. We pretty much have done nothing more than cosmetics, painting, the inside layout, flooring, and that's basically it. We've just done cosmetic aesthetic things to the property.
Okay. Well, I believe that we are ready to vote, but I will say that if this business fails as a funeral home, it can become a drug rehab because public buildings are on the list from the ZAC. So I just want people to be aware that if you wish to vote for this, we might strike public building from the list of allowed queues because you can get yourself a drug rehab with a public building. Yes, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
I just wanna go back to something I think the gentleman said. Did you mention that it's already a real estate office?
Yes, ma'am. I have, I'm with ESP. I'm an associate broker. My licenses are pretty much, they can go anywhere without having a national office, but I use that as my go-to office. Some people have home offices, but I have choose to use the building as my office downstairs.
Well, will you, will it be a funeral home and a real estate office?
Yes, ma'am. It's two layers, two floors to the building, over 800 square feet of space. So down beneath there, where it used to be a fellowship hall, that's where part of my office is there.
Okay, so now my question is for zoning, if you don't mind.
Repeat that again?
I would like to speak to someone besides you. I would like for you to move over so that, thank you. So what about, are these other uses gonna be allowable under the zoning he's applying for?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
They're not currently allowed. Staff was not aware of that. It was not part of what was submitted for the application. So we were unaware that there was an office at this facility.
Okay, so that kinda, that kinda sours my support because I feel like there hasn't been enough of an effort to comply with the regulations we have from a business license standpoint and from an occupancy standpoint thus far.
Counselor Smithman?
I have one more question. I'm sorry, I need to clarify. Are you licensed to be a funeral director? Who's gonna be running the actual funeral home?
No, I'm not. I just, you don't have to be licensed funeral director, the only one. I just have a team of technicians as well as embalmers that will come in place that I will employ to operate the facility.
I, well, I thought this-
By the state funeral home director's mandate, you don't have to be licensed funeral director.
Okay, well, I had different information, but, okay, thank you.
Counselor Williams?
Well, that brings me to a new set of questions because I think that we were told by your application that you would be outsourcing any type of embalming or cremation. So you're gonna have a team of embalmers that are there?
No, they're, so there are crematories around, people who do cremations. I can contract, outsource it to them, not the embalming aspect of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the embalming would be happening there?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. President?
Wow.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. So you don't have a current business license for your real estate operation at that?
Well, my license fall under EXP, which is River Chase Court. That's how my license fall with them. I'm an independent contractor, so I can operate out of my house. But because there's a business there, I can come there and operate as an agent.
So that's a no, but the city of Birmingham does require a business license, F.I.I., separate of the real estate business?
Right, it's done through EXP, the corporate office. I'm under their umbrella of license. Whether they have them with Birmingham, I would think so. But me individually, that's what I do. I choose to operate out of the office there at the building.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. President, I'm gonna turn it back over to you for the vote.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clark, we are ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that item fails. Next item, please.
Okay, that next item will be item number three on page two. And item three is an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 24-15 to adopt a restated moratorium on automated cash wash uses, I mean, sorry, car wash uses and structures. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent to take the item up.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Counselor O'Quinn and-
Counselor Tate.
Counselor Member Abbott? Counselor Member Clark? Counselor Member Moore? Counselor Member Smithman is out. Counselor Member Tate? Councilmember Williams is out. Councilmember Woods? Council President Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn?
Aye. Now move the item.
Second.
Okay, so that'd be Counselor O'Quinn and Councilmember-
Pro Tim Alexander seconded.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now that item is before you.
Okay. Attorney Bernard, would you like to give us a brief summary of what we're doing?
Good morning, councilmembers. Good morning, um, Chiefs Sparks and Mitchell. Um, Julie Bernard, I serve as Assistant City Attorney, uh, in the Office of City Attorney. And as the council, I'm sure, very well remembers, um, you held a public hearing last week uh, to consider the possible amendment or repeal of, um, ordinance twenty-four fifteen, which was adopted in March and imposed a moratorium on car wash, automated car wash development in the city, um, for a period of time. Um, at the end of that hearing, uh, Council President moved to have, um, an ordinance brought back, and that's what's before you today. Um, you know, one, one change in it, and I did mention last week, you know, that the zoning, uh, applications and ZBA actions are stricken from being affected by the moratorium. Um, those are processes that do go through, uh, a public, you know, procedure before they're approved or denied. So, you know, like a rezoning application would come forward to this council. So, um, so there's a public process for it versus the administrative actions that would be the other things that would be covered by the moratorium. Uh, so that's back before you. Um, another thing is that, uh, there's the current moratorium, if it remains in effect, expires September fifth. The council has an option under the ordinance to extend it if you find that the conditions arising and leading to the moratorium still exist, and if there's reasonable progress that's being made towards making the changes anticipated to address those conditions, you can extend it for up to ninety days. Uh, because it, the expiration is coming up so soon, on September fifth, the council may want to consider adopting it for a period, um, that would include that ninety day period. That's the way the draft is written, but it's up to the council to make a determination as to what the period would be for this moratorium.
So would the ninety day extension bring us into December or January?
Into December. Uh, the current moratorium expiring on September fifth, if it's extended for ninety days, which would mean you'd have to have another hearing before September fifth, that would extend it to December fourth. Uh, if you adopt this, um, ordinance today for a hundred and twenty day period, which would be the roughly thirty days remaining, and then the extra ninety days, the date calculator, I predict, puts that at December eighth, so it's right within a few days. To early December, yes. And the moratorium does have another, uh, a provision, you know, for consideration of a further extension if it's necessary.
Okay, so, um, can you speak to the issue of, of reasonable progress? Um, in terms, you know, can you give us, um, some perspective on what progress is being made, um, to identify what zoning designations, you know, where, um, these types of operations would be allowed?
I would probably want to defer to our zoning. Um, I will say that some of the matters the council has heard this morning, um, the, you know, mentioned in the moratorium was the, uh, in, in the council's findings and preamble would be to move towards, uh, the character, district amendments, um, with the urban neighborhoods, uh, which the council adopted this morning. And, you know, after that, there's a need to do the framework zoning, um. So I would, you know, like for zoning to mention that, you know, to have their testimony, but I just want to give you that overview.
Okay.
Good morning, Kim Spurla. I serve as a city zoning administrator. Um, as Attorney Bernard mentioned, um, with the adoption of the amendments this morning to the zoning ordinance, we'll now be able to move forward with the final rezoning plans, um, for the framework plan areas that have not gone through the rezoning process. Um, so those meetings are already being set up for August and September to start the public meetings. Um, so we are hitting the ground running, um, this month to get those communities rezoning plans finalized. And then once that's done, we would be able to sunset Title II of the city zoning ordinance, and we would all be under Title I, under all of the new zoning classifications.
Okay, so, state, restating that another way, there's a number of community engagement opportunities that are ongoing and upcoming and, um, in the context of considering this issue, we'll be able to engage with, uh, communities across the city to get some input on where people feel like these types of businesses, uh, would be most appropriately zoned and um, it's, it's reasonable to expect that we could have this issue, uh, resolved and a proposal for amending the existing co- zoning code to allow for, uh, automated car washes in whatever, um, zoning designation, um, the public deems is appropriate, is that all accurate?
Yes, sir. We hope, um, our goal is to get through the public meetings as quickly as possible so we can have draft zoning maps available for review. Um, so those public meetings are going to begin this month and into next month. Um, and it just depends on the community feedback that we receive at those meetings. Some communities may have two or three meetings versus some might require more. It just kind of depends when we get those kicked off. Um, but everything you stated is correct. We're beginning that process now.
Okay, additional questions? All right, there is no additional discussion. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is item number four on page three. And item number four is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed to twenty-one ten Avenue I LLC for the conveyance of the city's interest in the property legally described as lots nineteen and twenty and block twenty-one H. According to the survey of Enslie, as recorded in mapbook four, page three, and the probate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, and located at twenty-one ten Avenue I Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of a municipal improvement lien in accordance with chapter forty-eight of Title XI of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first to take up the item.
That was Counselor Smith and Pro Tim Alexander.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
And Council President O'Quinn.
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion on the item.
Counselor Abbott and Counselor Smith.
Okay, now that item is before you.
Serene discussion on this item. Seeing none, we are ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. I believe that is the, the last item, uh, business on, okay, so we'll move to our council office, uh, announcements. Counselor Woods?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, let's see here. The Robuck Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, August twelfth at six thirty PM. That meeting takes place at the East Pre- Police Precinct. The Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association will meet on Tuesday, August thirteenth at six PM. That meeting takes place at Smith Middle School. As always, taking advantage of the opportunity to, uh, get out and, and be involved in your neighborhoods. I think we saw today, uh, it's just important to stay as, uh, tied in as you can. Want to send a thank you to Coach Trent Dilfer and the UAB football team, as well as the staff of, uh, Blackwood Riverkeeper. Uh, came out on Saturday. Uh, it was supposed to be our week off, but the mayor called for a citywide cleanup, so we, we tagged in and uh, participated with that, and we had an extra cleanup. And, uh, I want to thank them. They brought the team out, uh, in the middle of camp to, to help clean up the area and make an impact as well, so we thank them. Um, also, need to announce, there are, there's two vacancies on, this will serve as the first announcement, but there's two vacancies on the uh, Birmingham Library Board. Uh, we'll be working to get those filled as quickly as possible to make sure that they're able to kind of maintain their quorums and don't have any, uh, interruption in the serving of their duties. If you're interested in serving on the library board, uh, email your, uh, interest and resume to Clinton dot Woods at Birmingham AL dot G O V. And as well, so share that information if you think someone would be good in that role. Uh, also, uh, excited, uh, I O's been on a roll lately. We saw yesterday they got the, uh, recompete grant. Uh, did get, um, affirmative indication that they will come to the Workforce Development Committee and kind of give update on, on some of the plans that they have in motion already and some things that they're getting going, so looking forward to that. Um, in that recompete grant, some of the highlights were, uh, won twenty million dollars, but Workforce Training Center, connecting, uh, people to good jobs, Child Care Center of Excellence, and a black business entrepreneurship center. So a lot of good things coming from there. And also got to take this opportunity to say a special happy birthday in advance, one day in advance, to our colleague Counselor Crystal Smith. Uh, the baby in the group, but she definitely packs a punch, so, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what Counselor Woods said. It was a great day for the city of Birmingham. Thank the mayor, his team, Sarah McMillan, Coriante Hauser, Cornel Wesley, and we're grateful for this recompete grant. He didn't know Birmingham, Pratt, Evergreen, Drury Hills, Norwood. Very exciting news for, um, individuals', um, lives to be changed. Um, Mr. President, we have the Wileham Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM at the Wileham Library at forty-three hundred Seventh Avenue. And that's Birmingham three five two two four. The Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six thirty at Mount Hebron Baptist Church, located at five oh three Fifth Street. Birmingham three five two one four. The Cypico Finley Neighborhood Meeting will be held Wednesday, August the seventh at five thirty at the Cypico Plant Community Room, located at fifteen hundred Thirty-second Avenue North. Oak Ridge Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, August the eighth, twenty twenty-four at four PM. And that's on conference call, and you can dial in by calling nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. The passcode is two two three four one eight. Hooper City Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, August the eighth at six PM at the Hooper City Recreational Center, located at thirty-nine oh one Fourth Street West. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, August the thirteenth at one PM. Please submit agenda items. Uh, by Wednesday, August the seventh, or later than twelve, noon to Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov. Also, tonight in the Westchester Neighborhood, they're having Watch Night, Meet and Greet Grill and Chill, and it starts at five thirty. For food, movie, neighborhood information, bring your lawn chairs. Don't forget to put on your blue light and your door decoration. For more information, you can contact Joseph Jenkins at two oh five seven oh five six one one four. Also, Back to School Community Outreach Rally, and that's Pastor Steve Green is coming over into District Nine with Pastor Carlos Brooks. They're doing a Back to School Respect Rally August the tenth, from four PM to seven PM. At St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, that's located at five twenty-one Fourth Street Pratt City. So come out for Pastor Green and the Respect, um, organization along with Pastor Carlos Brooks for this extravaganza. Hooper City Neighborhood is having their Fun Day at the Hooper City Recreation Center, thirty-nine oh one Fourth Street West, and that's going to be this Saturday, August the tenth, from ten AM to two PM, so bring your lawn chairs, come out and enjoy the Hooper City Neighborhood, um, Fun Day. So for more information, you can contact Mr. Anthony Douglas, who is the Neighborhood Association President, and his number is two oh five nine two oh six zero five nine. And finally, Mr. President, I would like to encourage, um, women who are interested, or people that are interested in starting a career, Strive Birmingham has a Stere Processing Technician Clinical Support Training. It's a fifteen week training, no cost program. You earn your certification, CR, CST, certification and job placement, so I would not miss this opportunity. You can go to strive.org slash Birmingham for this opportunity as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First, um, most importantly, happy early birthday to my colleague, uh, Ms. Smith. I'm excited to know that you are one year closer to being my age. Economic Development, I think that's how that works. Um, Economic Development Tourism will be today, uh, in ten minutes in con- in conference rooms D and E at eleven thirty. And Robuck Springs will be meeting on Thursday, the eighth, at seven o'clock at the Regular Place New Beginning Church. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are the announcements for District Seven. On Thursday, August eighth, the West Brownsville Neighborhood Association will meet. They'll meet at ten AM via conference call. On Friday, August ninth, Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood, or it's listed as Sand Ridge on the Bulk Trash schedule, so be sure to get your items out for pickup Friday, August ninth. On Mon- Monday, August twelfth, the Powderly Neighborhood Association will meet at five thirty at the Henry Crumpton Recreation Center. And the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM at the Oxmoor Valley Community Center. I do, also at this time, I want to offer condolences to our East Brownsville Neighborhood President, Mrs. Gwineland Cook Bibb on the homegoing, um, of her daughter, and her daughter's name is Minister Taisha McCurdy. So, um, I did talk with Mrs. Cook Bibb yesterday. Of course, at any time you, um, lose a child, you never expect that as we, um, grow older. So I just, with deep sadness, we do convey condolences to Mrs. Cook Bibb. And those are my announcements, and happy birthday, Counselor Smith.
All right, thank you, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, Counsel Abbott, I haven't said publicly, I had to leave counsel meeting early last week, but I'm very sorry about your mother. Um, you know, it's very hard, I think Mayor Woodfin said that last week, to lose your mom, no matter what age she is, and I want to commend you for taking care of your mom because a lot of people don't take the time to do that, so I really commend you for that. I'm sorry. Um, and then also, even though Mayor Woodfin isn't here, congratulations on baby Woodfin. I was really praying for August seventh, y'all, but I didn't get there, but, um, congratulations to him and, uh, our first lady. I'm very happy for them, so beautiful baby girl. Uh, Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association Meeting will meet today at four PM at Harrison Park Rec Center. Mesa City Neighborhood will meet today via teleconference at four thirty PM. North Tidusville will meet at five PM tomorrow at Memorial Park Rec Center. Then on Monday, August twelfth, at five PM at New Hope, Weston Manor will meet. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be on Monday, August twelfth, at three thirty PM. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Uh, we will be having our last summer farmer's market this Saturday, August tenth, from one thirty to three thirty is also Tidusville Day. So, um, for the farmer's market, we will have free watermelon, ice cream, and non-ebonized popcorn. For Tidusville Day, they will be having free, uh, barbecue, inflatables, et cetera. We're going to have a lot of fun. We're going to have a lot of fun. All forms of payment are accepted. Then that same day on Saturday, New Purim Baptist Church will have their Friends and Family Weekend. The cookout will be on Saturday from 10 to 4:00. Sunday Worship Service will begin at 11:00 AM, and the church is located at 708 Goldwire Place Southwest. And for more information, visit our website, www.d6bham.com. And then also, even though he's in school, y'all, my nephew Noah saw his birthday at Rams yesterday. So I made sure to embarrass him as well, to video him going to school. But his birthday is actually this Friday, so he's turning 14. So I want to wish Noah a happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I have to tell Counselor Williams that the birthday thing does not work that way. She's not going to catch up with you. But it did make me laugh. The next Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 14th, at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. I want to thank the mayor and his staff and all of the residents who came out to the District 3 Town Hall Meeting last Thursday. It was very informative. We got a copy of our paving list for the next year, which was exciting. You know, there were a few people who wanted to know why their street wasn't on there, but you know, I told them, we have to share the money amongst nine districts. So everybody's street will not get paved this year. Meetings tonight, we have the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Meeting. It is at 6:30 at the Avondale Library in the meeting room. If you have any concerns or issues, please do call 311, or better yet, download the app, the My Be Him 311 app, either from the Play Store or the Apple Store. That app is just, it's fantastic, because you can attach photos. And I'm one of those people that thinks a picture is worth a thousand words, and no one can say they can't find what you're complaining about if you send them a good photograph of it. So do that. And that's it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to, where am I? There we go. So, wanted to say Fairmont Neighborhood Association Meeting takes place tonight at 6:00 PM at Mount Caramo Baptist Church. We have Engle Nook Neighborhood Association that will be taking place tonight. Shout out to our president, Madam Gwendolyn Webb in the crowd. The Engle Nook Neighborhood Association will take place at 5:30 PM at Engle Nook Rec Center. We also will have the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association, oh, I'm sorry. Engle Nook will take, Engle Nook, Woodlawn, Robuck, as well as Airport Highlands will all take place on Monday at 6:00 PM. Those will be those Neighborhood Associations. I'm fumbling all of this, but it's all good. The Community Development Committee will take place on today as well at 2:00 PM in council chambers. And the Park and Recreation Board Meeting will be tomorrow at 9:00 AM at Legion Field. Again, the Park and Recreation Board Meeting will be tomorrow at 9:00 AM at Legion Field. Couple of other things that I wanted to make mention of as well. Definitely wanted to remind folks about the Community Health Fair that will take place on Saturday, August the 17th, from 12 to 3:00 PM at Legion Field, sponsored by the Alpha Phi Chapter of Omega Psi Phi. We also have the 13th Annual Job Fair by Congresswoman Tara Sewell that will be taking place this Thursday, August the 8th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Bestmore Civic Center. And that address is 1130 Ninth Avenue Southwest, Bestmore, Alabama. If you would like to get more information about that job fair, please email jobfairal07@gmail.com. And this is completely free, don't have to pay for anything. And again, it's hosted by Congresswoman Tara Sewell this Thursday, August 8th. Also, just want to, you know, reiterate again, congratulations to District 4 resident Jermaine Funnymaine Johnson on his new position. And want to thank, you know, Madam Protem for sending that information over to me on his new position as Strategic Communications Officer for Memphis Shelby County Schools in Memphis, Tennessee. Got to call him and see how his first day of school went. But just want to, you know, tell him that we're proud of him. And, you know, Birmingham is out here still impacting the world and leaving our stamp on the world. So congratulations to him and his family. Was also, you know, notified of some very sobering news about Brother Hezekiah Jackson, who recently passed. And so, Counsel, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to, you know, offer a resolution of sympathy for him and his family.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Thank you. I know that, you know, details are coming soon about, you know, his funeral arrangements, but definitely wanted to acknowledge him for what he has been able to add to our community and done for the city. And so, and last but not least, I definitely want to also offer my congratulations to the mayor, him and his family, as they continue to grow the city. Yeah, so welcome to the gang. And, yeah, be checking in with him to see if he getting some sleep.
Girl power.
We in here. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. The loss of Hezekiah, he was a force. He brings, he brings me back to my first days of City Hall when he was president of the CABE. And I learned most of my political lessons from Hezekiah, because he had all the political, he had it down. But he was something else, just a force. So we lost a great citizen today. Want to shout out to my eldest sibling, my brother Chucky. Today is his 75th birthday. And he's a Vietnam veteran, a Purple Heart, a real warrior, and a real trip. But I love him dearly, so happy birthday to my brother Chucky. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to celebrate the 13th birthday of the Crossplex with a bunch of folks, kids and families. It was a lot of fun. And then a real treat, a high honor for me to represent Birmingham as we celebrated the induction of a living jazz legend into the, who has broken a record, making records over the last 60 years. Legendary bassist Ron Carter was fittingly the only inductee into the 2024 Alabama Jazz Hall of Fame. And the museum had a, I guess, a soft opening. So it was a really fun Saturday. And then I went to Red Mountain Theater to see the Carole King musical. So you have one week to see that. It's pretty awesome. Beautiful, it's called. And I didn't realize how much she contributed to so many artists as a songwriter before she did her own thing. So back to District 8, away from that cultural arts stuff, we're having neighborhood meetings this week. We've got the Fairview Neighborhood Meeting today at 5:30 via conference call. You can call our office at 205-254-2304 to get the dial-in information. And the Thomas Neighborhood will meet in person tonight. They gather at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church, Thomas, at 6:30 PM. We were up really, really early this morning. Thanks to our friends from the Freshwater Land Trust for highlighting the forthcoming Valley Creek Rails to Trails project on this morning's Fox 6 Good Day Alabama program for Red Rock Tuesday. So we had the walking group out extra early, starting like at 7:00, to, you know, have some of our neighborhood leaders talk about the excitement of having this positive amenity added to Western Birmingham. And, you know, just anticipating the changes. And now that the funding's in place and they're making some headway with CSX, we look forward, we're optimistic. Maybe it'll break ground in early 2025. Be sure to join the Birmingham Police Department tonight for National Night Out. It's a centralized national night out from 6:00 to 9:00 at CityWalk. So they're doing, they're asking everybody to come out. I don't know if they will service your local projects if you have those and stop by, but I know my neighborhood is planning to participate in this one. And there's going to be music activities and food. National Night Out serves as a platform to enhance positive relationships between law enforcement and the community. So everybody come out. I'm not sure the exact block. I don't know if anybody knows which block they're in tonight, because CityWalk is so long. I had it last week. I'll look it up. Maybe I'll find it before the end. But also, join the Birmingham Museum of Art for another art and conversation with Angela May, the Associate Director of Learning and Engagement. May will explore the deep spiritual and cultural connections associated with the art of tattooing, discussing the fascinating links between identity, tattoos, and devotion across various cultures. The event takes place on August 7th from 10:30 to 12:00 noon. So, and before each talk at 10:30, you're invited to the cafe to enjoy light snacks courtesy of Juniper, our new cafe partners. The lecture begins at 11:00 AM in the auditorium. For information, you can go to artsbma.org. Also note, the Five Points West Community will host their Community Fun Day on Saturday, August 10th, at Central Park Recreation Center and Park from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So come out for free food, music, games, fellowship, and more. Bring your lawn chairs and come to have a good time with your neighbors. And if you're looking for a fun way to get active, you can meet neighbors, District 8 neighbors. Join us every Thursday morning, weather permitting, at 8:00 AM at the Starbucks at the Crossplex for a walk. We've been traditionally walking around the Crossplex property. It's been pretty hot. So on some hot mornings, we've been, you know, traveling down to the High Or Line and getting on the trail in Midfield that will eventually connect back up to Crossplex. And it's really shady. It's got a complete tree canopy almost covering the trail. So it's, it's a welcome relief for the heat we've been experiencing. So just meet with us on Thursday at the Starbucks, and we'll decide if we're going to walk there or go down to the High Or Line. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. In District 5, we have several Neighborhood Association meetings this week. East Lake Neighborhood Association is meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at Household of Faith Church. Forest Park South Avondale will also meet tonight at 6:30 at the Avondale Library. Smithfield Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, August 8th, at 6:00 PM at the Smithfield Court Community Center. Gate City Neighborhood Association is scheduled for Monday, August 12th, at 4:00 PM at the Marx Village Campus of Hope. Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association is also on Monday, August 12th, at 6:00 PM at the Harris Home Recreation Center. The Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Meeting will be held Monday, August 12th, at 2:00 PM. If you have any submissions, please contact kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. August is sidewalk season. So the annual Sidewalk Film Festival will be August 19th through the 25th in downtown Birmingham's historic theater district. And as always, in coinciding with the Sidewalk Film Festival is the Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival. That will be on Saturday, August 24th, starting at 2:00 PM to, until 10:00 PM, right there on Fourth Avenue in the Business District. So please feel free to bring your bag chair and your cooler and camp out and hear some great music. The website for the event is www.forthavenuejazz.org. So check that out. And also, just want to remind folks that we have two great farmers markets that happen every Saturday. East Lake Farmers Market takes place every Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon at East Lake UMC until October. And Pepper Place Farmers Market happens every Saturday, 7:00 AM to noon at Pepper Place. And just wanted to offer condolences to the friends and family of Hezekiah Jackson. Knew Hezekiah for a long time. Quite frankly, one of the most classy persons that I've ever known. And just an extremely interesting person, always, always enjoyed talking to him. And he'll be dearly missed. So that, we will move on to our public speakers. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Clark?
Chaz has the bit of information I was looking for on the National Night Out.
Okay.
Could you?
Chief Mitchell?
Yes, so the National Night will be tonight at August, well, August the 6th, 2024, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Richard Erickson Jr. Boulevard and Ninth Avenue North. That's the location.
And I think the police department wanted him to invite the whole city council.
Yes, the city is invited to show up, show up and show out in peaceful way.
It's from 6:00 to 9:00? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam Clark, could we call our public speakers, please?
Yes, sir. The first speaker, speaker is Willie Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, as you approach the lectern, please remember to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes as displayed on the monitor.
Willie Jenkins, 1105 Southwood Drive, Brownville High. And I would like to say, let my heart go out to the family. But I would like to say on the, they still going to give me appreciation, men of praise. I mean, I don't know when they're going to do it, but they planning on doing it pretty soon. I let y'all know. I just don't know when or where. And also, my prayers go out to Mr. Ben, 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 Ben Harris. He was, he was got, he got hurt at the church and had a massive heart attack. My prayers go out to that family, Ben Harris. And also, we getting ready for the reunion, Carver, good news. Carver High School reunion coming up, first Saturday in October. We getting ready for our reunion coming up, first Saturday in October in all Birmingham Paul. We looking out for everybody with the Carver High School. Come out and enjoy the picnic, the first Saturday in October. Also, we got a new pastor, I guess I told you about Pastor Aaron, come from Bestmore. We had a night out, give children, gift bags for the children going back to school, backpacks and stuff. And we had a wonderful time at Oak Street Baptist Church. At the school pack, the cat, backpack, you know, they give away the school backpack. And we had a wonderful time there. But it won't be long, October, right around the corner. And we, and the men of praise, we still saying, even though we lost Johnny, but we still, we going to be at the master on the fourth Sunday. City Council Men of Praise, we going to be at the master, Reverend Horton of church on the fourth Sunday at 3:00, men's day. But then they going to Gas in Alabama, going way out of town, going to Gas in Alabama. The Men of Praise, we be traveling all down different places, here and there, here and there. But thanks God, you know. Also, I'm going to pray for my church member, Marie Murdaugh. Here, she kind of sick, you know, her daughter got mayor. But I just wanted to pray for the family, Marie Murdaugh. I go to my church, Oak Street Baptist Church. She went to Oak Street, but they go to another church, Bethel Baptist Church. Asking y'all to pray, continue to pray. She doing pretty good, but ask y'all to pray, pray for her, you know, her family. And they pray for all the family, lost somebody, you know, everybody lost somebody. But let's pray for the city council, everybody, pray for me, pray for my sister and my family. And that's all I like to say. It won't be long before Christmas, Santa Claus be raining the bells out the wire. Yeah, we putting that, Santa Claus be coming out pretty soon. Won't be long, I mean, it might be going fast, you know, y'all, you know, December, October, November. Just, you know, just coming, I got a birthday coming up, December, I'll be 70 years old, December to 20. Let y'all know, 70, I'm 70, be 70, 20, December will be my birthday.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Renee Hyatt.
I'm Renee Hyatt, I live at three oh four East View Drive. Uh we got garbage, it's been sitting in our neighbor's house, three twenty since uh June seventeenth, they cut limbs down in their backyard, this truck's come by three times, not picked it up. They've gone down the end of five mile road and picked up brush. They came down five mile road yesterday and picked up brush. This stuff still has been sitting there at three oh nine and three twenty-one since June the seventeenth where they've cut down limbs and stuff and they have not picked it up. If you come down five mile road, there's four or five houses that they've got weeds rolled up, uh empty lot, the nut cut, cut. And on Robinson Drive, there's an older man, he's a veteran, uh he's unable to cut his yard, he's got a pituitary wind that's been busted out for two years, I don't know if somebody can go help him put this pituitary wind in, cause he's got it taped up with plastic and he needs help, he's got cancer, he's probably in his seventies, I'm guessing his age, I'm not real sure. But if y'all lived on East Side, our neighborhood looks like crap. You can go to West End, you can go to uh South Side and the neighborhood looks great. You don't see all this stuff piled up out there and I understand why we can't get help getting our neighborhoods clean and looking good. You can come up East View Dr- East View Drive, it looks great, all by, keeps the grass cut, yards clean. You go down East View Boulevard, half of the yards are not cut, I mean, it's overgrown, it looks awful. I don't know what y'all can do about it or what we can do about it.
Councilmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh thank you for your your uh concerns and bringing this to our attention, Ms. Renee. Uh what I'll do is I'll have uh Mr. Darius May to meet with you after this this meeting is concluded, uh and we'll get those addresses for those different locations, uh so that we can get those turned in for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and hopefully someone uh either listening to this video or within hear hearing um will have some resources who can help the gentleman who you mentioned. Um I would also encourage um you to check with our Community Development Department. Um they stay in contact with a number of organizations that provide uh, you know, critical repairs um for individuals. These are not city entities, but uh nonprofit organizations and service organizations that do that type of work, um so they can connect you to the the groups that do that, so um there's several of them out there, so that would be uh one recommendation is to check with our Community Development Department to get that resource list.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Next speaker, please.
Keith Williams.
And Mr. President, as our next speaker comes up, uh I know that you may have mentioned, you know, you hopeful that hopeful that there are other organizations or people listening uh to help that other individual, uh that gentleman who's seventy years old, cut his grass. I know that, you know, recently the council gave money, um several councils on the on uh gave money towards Tool Bank USA um for issues such as that, right? If we have different people in our communities or, you know, uh elderly individuals that need assistance with, you know, cutting their lots or uh any type of overgrown, you know, vacancies, uh we as a council, you know, put money towards being able to address that and make tools available for community members to be able to uh join us uh in that fight against, you know, uh overgrown lots. And wasn't sure if there's a update or, you know, um some type of, I don't know, new development in where we are uh with that project in particular.
Uh Mr. President, I thought I sent it to y'all, but they said they they're doing a soft launch sometime like the middle in August, but I was texting him and let y'all know what he said, cause this house, um you know, where April one is, so it's across the street where Tuna is, I think a few of us gave money for that, so um let me text him right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Uh good afternoon, my name is Keith Williams, my address is four fifty-six Kappa Avenue, zip code three five two zero five. Um I don't know if y'all aware of this, but on Friday, this past Friday, there was a news report about a ninety-two-year-old elderly woman from Collegeville uh who uh made a plea for someone to have the grass cut next to her property. Um according to this resident, he said that uh her home was invaded by rodents and snakes, which I can definitely verify that uh took place. And she says she been contacting the city for over a year with no resolution. So on Sunday, a group of us came to the area and we rectified the situation. We also talked to other neighbors who had similar issues uh to where their homes are being infested with rodents and snakes. And I want to publicly congratulate Public Works for uh hearing those cries and coming out and uh cut the grass. But we have seen, receive a lot of backlash and criticism for what has happened. Let me just say that after our assessment that we determined that this lady who is ninety-two years old, her life was in danger. She could have been bitten by a snake, she could have been bitten by a rat, we know both of them carry diseases. And as a good neighbor, we decide to take action to make sure that her and the rest of residents were safe. That is what neighbors do. We look out for each other. And yes, I understand the process of weed abatement and, you know, cutting grass and tearing down homes, but this lady was in great danger. You know, Lord knows she could have died of a snake bite or something like that, but yet we got a lot of criticism from this, which I don't appreciate. I thought that these comments were in bad timing, in bad taste, and totally disrespectful, that we as citizens of Birmingham, when a neighbor needs help, we step into action without being asked, because I'm a firm believer that I am my brother's keeper and when a neighbor is in trouble, we're supposed to help them. So I just want to put that on notice, that we thought, we believe that what we have done was in the best interest of the neighbors in that particular block. And I don't regret doing anything or said anything, I don't regret anything that I've said or done over this past weekend because I am my brother's keeper. So I just want to put that on notice and make y'all, you know, aware of that situation and I hope that the city will do a better job in responding to those types of things because that right, that situation right there had put a lot of lives at jeopardy and I could not stand to see a ninety-two-year-old person suffer in silence the way that she did. So I did what I thought was right in keeping her and her neighbors safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tiffany Sellers.
Assalamu alaikum. Okay, so I don't know if this is appropriate to address you all with this issue, it's more of a concern. Um I know you all are aware, we all are aware, the city of Birmingham was awarded federally mu- federal money, twenty to the twenty million dollars. My question is to all of you, since you all work for the city of the citizens of Birmingham is where, if you all are aware of where this money is being allocated and if the public is, the citizens of Birmingham are privy to that information?
Yes, ma'am, that's public information and there was a press conference yesterday that uh provided many of the details. Um so just, you know, right off the top of my head, it's uh includes workforce development, um transportation and childcare. So there's a partnership with um Lawson State that will provide um workforce training, you know, for for jobs. Um there's partnership with um United Way of Central Alabama on the childcare component. Um Birmingham Public Library is involved, uh Regions Bank is involved and there are several other partners, but um you know, one of the things that um I'm kind of excited about is the transportation piece, so you know, the the biggest barriers to um that, you know, just generally for fo- folks wanting to enter the workforce are um number one, access to quality childcare um and number two, transportation. So the childcare component is is definitely part of this. Um and on the transportation piece, um the, there will be an additional uh on-demand microtransit zones added across the city, so currently there are only portions of the city have access to that service.
Yes.
Uh as part of this program, um parts of the city that do not currently have uh cannot currently utilize on-demand microtransit, um those uh parts of the city will have that service implemented, so that's just a few things, but I would encourage you to um check out the Office of Innov- Innovation and Economic Opportunity um for additional details about the um, is it Restore or no, it's not Restore, it's Recompute. It's the the program is called uh Recompute. So um there's, should be uh plenty of inform- information available um regarding that, so.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you all and and happy birthday and you all enjoy.
All right. I want to thank our officers on duty um this morning, we have Cedric Pinkert, who's based here in Sea uh City Hall and uh Officer Suttles and Officer Blair from North Precinct, thank you for being with us. Uh it's the sign that brings us to our end of business.
Yeah, so this is the twenty twenty-four Restore Games East and today is a day about, you know, providing fun activities for uh youth in our community and getting them connected to the Restore programs and all of the service organizations that are present today.
We've been giving out backpacks, we've gotten kids registered for school, we've gotten um, families have left with mental health resources, they've left with all sorts of great things that I'm hoping will be able to strengthen those families.
The other, you know, component of this uh of today is really about the Restore Program, um really engaging with youth that have come into contact with the criminal justice system at some point through family court and um statistically trying to, you know, get those kids uh on a path to make sure that technically trying to, you know, get those kids uh on a path to make sure that